Councilmember Mario Buchanan Jr. Councilmember Afrika Luna Carrasco.
Present.
Councilmember Jose Ponce. Councilmember Matias Rosales.
Present. Am I the only one getting feedback?
We're all getting feedback.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Vice Mayor Mari Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Mayor Gerardo Sanchez.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we all stand for the pledge of allegiance? Vice Mayor, could you lead us to the pledge of allegiance, please?
I think she would.
Yeah. Mario, could you lead us to the pledge of allegiance, please?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to our republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with the injustice for all.
Thank you, Mario. Invocation.
Okay, let us pray. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Gather our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Thank you, Lieutenant. We're gonna go ahead and go with the proclamations, Sonia.
Prostate cancer awareness month, September 2020. Whereas this year approximately 191,930 men will be diagnosed with prostate cancer in the United States alone every year, and roughly 33,330 die this year from the disease, which is 87 men every day. And whereas in Arizona, an estimated 3,830 new cases of prostate cancer will be, and an estimated 760 deaths will occur in 2020. And whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer and the second leading cause of cancer-related deaths behind lung and colon cancer. And whereas men with relatives, father, brother, son, with a history of prostate cancer are twice as likely to develop the disease. And whereas one in nine men are diagnosed with prostate cancer, African-American men are at the highest risk for the disease with a rate of one in seven men. African-American men are 2.3 times more likely to die from the disease. And whereas prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed form of cancer and the second leading cause of cancer-related deaths among men. And whereas education regarding prostate cancer and early detection strategies is critical to saving lives and preserving and protecting our families. And whereas nearly 3 million men in the U.S. are living with a prostate cancer diagnosis, that number is estimated to climb to 4 million by 2024 as men in the baby boomer generation age. Whereas all men are at risk for prostate cancer, and we encourage the citizens of San Luis to increase the importance of prostate screening. Now therefore, Gerardo Sanchez, mayor of the city of San Luis, does hereby proclaim September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month in the city of San Luis, Arizona, and encourages all residents of this city to support the education, prevention, and treatment efforts of those who fight against this disease. Passed and adopted this 26th day of August, 2020.
Thank you, Sonia. I just wanna comment that prostate cancer is something that affects a lot of people, especially if you have a history, if your father, grandfather had a history of prostate cancer. So it's very important you start screening early. They recommend at 45 years, start having actually the blood test. It's a very simple blood test. You could start the process. And for those people who have histories, it's so important to know your parents' history. So for those men, like they said, when I, I mean, two out of 10, it's a very high incidence in regards to the percentage of cancers in the U.S. So if you're a male and you have a history, criminal history, it's very important to get screened. So thank you, Sonia, and it's very important. Thank you. We're gonna go ahead and go with the presentation recognition of the 2020 first and second quarter awardees with the Employee Recognition and Awards Program, ERAP, for their outstanding work with the city assemblies.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Alz Gonzalez, Training and Programs Coordinator for the City of San Luis. And yes, we're here to present to you Employee Recognition Awards Program first quarter and second quarter recipients. We are gonna start with years of service, and then we're gonna go ahead and head over to first quarter, and then we'll wrap it up with second quarter. If I could ask those recipients for tonight if they can go ahead and come in and receive their certificate or award, and then they can go ahead and take a quick picture and then go ahead and take a seat until the end of his presentation. So years of service. So we have, we're gonna start with five years. And the first one on the list would be Ms. Maria Cortez. She is with Facilities. She was unable to join us, so we'll go ahead and go over to the next one, which would be five years as well, and that's Jonathan Dumodag with IT. He was also unable to join us. So we'll go over with Andre Gonzalez with Public Works. He was unable to assist. So we're gonna jump over to Mr. Samuel Gonzalez with Public Works. He's also unavailable tonight. Ms. Sochi Lopez with Public Works as well. Not present. Domingo Sosa with IT. He's working in the IT lab, so he's, it'll take a quick second for us to get him over here. All right, he was, then we're gonna go ahead and go over with 15 years. We have Joaquin Campa with Building Safety.
Very good.
All right, Detective Paulino Lara with Polis. He was unable to assist tonight. Sergeant Miller, 15 years.
Congratulations.
And then we go with Ms. Andrea Ruiz with Municipal Court. Unable to assist tonight. Then we move over to last but not least, 20 years. And we have Isidro Lopez with Fire.
Wow.
Jesus Enrique Luna with Senior Services. And last but not least, under years of service, we have Mr. Gilberto Torres with Waste Water.
Wow. Congratulations.
Yep, so that was years of service. So then we're gonna go ahead and move over to the first quarter, our 2020 ERAP awardees.
Good evening, everyone. First quarter customer service award. We got Socorro Ayala, Hollywood Records clerk. Socorro Ayala, sorry. Socorro Ayala is the recipient of the customer service award this first quarter due to the exceptional customer service that she demonstrates on a day-to-day basis. Mrs. Ayala is a very helpful individual, not only with coworkers, but with our general public. She always strives to give the best of her when it comes to customer service. She always has a great attitude towards internal and external customers. Mrs. Ayala takes initiative and is not afraid to take on new projects even though it might now even be needed. Thank you for your work and dedication to the city of San Luis.
Yeah, she was unable to attend tonight, but if we could ask Lieutenant Santana to pick up the certificate on her behalf, that would be great. Thank you, sir.
Next. For the achievement award, we have Information Technology, IT Department. Our IT department is the recipient of the achievement award for the first quarter due to their work and effort on transitioning the city over to online council meetings in an effort to prevent transmission or possible spread of COVID-19. The city of San Luis had to close most of its facilities to visitors and the general public. During this time, city council has continued to hold their council meetings through live audio stream to members of the public to listen to. Without the assistance of our IT department, this would not have been possible. They had to take different measures on and off-site, including last-minute changes, to be able to connect our elected officials and be able to have a successful transition and council meetings. We are very thankful to our IT department in helping us achieve these and for the city to be compliant with the open meeting law.
Very good. Congratulations.
The Award of Excellence for Mary French Jones, Grants Rider. We have Ms. Mary French Jones as the recipient of the Award of Excellence for the first quarter of 2020. Ms. French Jones was challenged with correcting several online systems that allow the city of San Luis to submit grants, including the system of awards, grants.gov, and the DOJ systems. The federal government online systems are very difficult to correct, and she had to coordinate with different department managers who were busy dealing with other projects. The systems had to be corrected in order to apply to the COPS grants. Mrs. French Jones was pressured to do this in a short period of time, and she successfully corrected the online systems and submitted the grant within three weeks. Mrs. French Jones portrayed exemplary effectiveness in accomplishing this project, motivated and collaborated with others while making a high impact to our community. Next, we have the Safety Award awarded to Jose De La vara, City Prosecutor. Mr. De La vara is the recipient of the Safety Award for the first quarter of 2020. As we all know, 2020 has been throug with COVID-19 and have had to adapt to change, to the change of the environment. As soon as Mr. De La vara and his division heard the virus could spread quickly and the city issued the declaration of emergency and order, Mr. De La vara did not hesitate to make the necessary measures to reduce exposure to the virus. Their job requires City Prosecutor's Office to interact with the public. 101 and Mr. De La vara requested that our public contact be minimal and asked the court to allow telephone appearance for the time being. We would like to thank Mr. De La vara and the other department heads that have taken the necessary measures to keep our department and divisions protected. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kay. For the employee of the quarter, we got Sergeant Damian Miller from Police Department. Sergeant Miller is the recipient of the employee of the quarter for the first quarter of 2020 for the assistance that he provided for the events that Parks and Recreation had for the first quarter. Sergeant Miller was the main contact for the police department and made it to every meeting and was able to assist with all the requests. Thanks to Sergeant Miller's assistance, suggestions, and feedback provided, we were able to coordinate and offer successful events for the community. Some events where Sergeant Miller collaborated. And was the MascoTamania event where Sergeant Miller and the K-9 unit provided a demonstration, coordination of safety during the route of APR's 5K walk run bike event. And for assisting in finding bicycles for the safety event and gathering agencies to come in. Thank you, Sergeant Miller, and everyone else that was a recipient of an award for the first quarter of 2020.
All right, we just have a second quarter left, and we're good to go. So starting with second quarter. For customer service award, we have Mr. Carlos Correa with Public Works, Highway Users, HERF. Carlos Correa is the recipient of the customer service award for the second quarter. Correa exhibits great customer service and has been able to maintain areas like Main Street intact. Correa has also been instrumental in fixing water irrigation systems rather than placing a call to the Water Division. Correa is a reliable individual and able to perform outside of his job responsibilities, or he has been able to repair equipment that was deemed obsolete and that had not been utilized by the division in a while. Correa is always polite and always makes the effort to give the best of him when providing customer service. And as a member of the Public Works Highway Users Division, thank you for your work and dedication to the city of San Luis. All right, and then we have Achievement Award. So this is for the Public Works Water Division. Our Public Works Water Division is the recipient of the Achievement Award for the second quarter. This division makes sure that all the state-required monitoring happens on time for water delivered to our constituents. They assure that the quality of our water is within the parameters established by the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. They keep all of our wells running and make sure that the conception demands are met. Despite being significantly impacted by COVID-19, this division has been able to keep things running smoothly and in compliance with the state and federal government. We're very thankful for our Water Division. All right, and next one on the list would be the Police Department Squad C. This is for Award of Excellence. The recipient of Award of Excellence for the second quarter is Squad C from the Police Department, and it consists of Sergeant Prieto, Officer Pereira, Officer Perez, Officer Rojas, and Officer Astora. During the month of June, Squad C was called to assist a local resident who had been, who had his bicycle stolen. Knowing that this was its only mode of transportation, Squad C did not hesitate to reach into their own pockets and donate money to purchase a resident a new one. This exemplary job performance demonstrates dedication to this department and more importantly, to the public to which they serve. They serve every day with honesty, integrity, loyalty, and dedication to others. Their teamwork and dedication is truly an example for not only those in law enforcement, but for all members of the community. For the Safety Award this second quarter, we have the Fire Department. The recipient of the Safety Award, since the start of this pandemic, the Fire Department has been on the front lines time and time again, and without hesitation, our Fire Department provides the best treatment and comfort for patients they encounter and that are suffering from COVID-19. Most if not all of the first responders have been tested for the virus themselves at least seven times. From wearing a mask for 24 hours a day to disinfecting all the station and units, they continue to come in and work to provide support and help keep all the residents of the city of San Luis safe. Thank you, Fire Department. All right, and last but not least, we have Employee of the Quarter, Mr. Fabian Felix with the Fire Department. During this difficult time, Fabian has been in charge of obtaining personal protective equipment for the Fire Department. It has been rough, to say the least, since every first responder or healthcare facility is vying to obtain the same PPE. With Fabian's networking ability, the Fire Department has not had as shortage of PPE whatsoever. We have been fully stocked and continue to secure PPE for the safety of our personnel. Fabian can be seen in and off time to make sure the PPE has been delivered and make sure that it has been thoroughly inspected in order to meet standards for our Fire Department. That would be Mr. Fabian Felix. And that concludes our presentation. And we wanna thank, on behalf of ERAP, we wanna thank everyone for their hard work and dedication to the city of San Luis.
Thank you. For those who got awarded for years of service, gracias. Thank you so much for being part of the family and being part of San Luis for making a difference. For those recipients of excellence, those, great job for customer service, great job. To Squad C in going beyond your call of duty, I thank you, and we are very grateful. Actions like that speak a lot more. Those actions are just amazing, and I appreciate what you did for one of our residents, and I really appreciate what you do. Our Fire, thank you for being there 24/7. Our Fire and Police, thank you for being there 24/7. When you're most needed, you're always there. So thank you for keeping our city safe, both the Department of Fire and Police. To both Cs, great job. I know it's been, it's been, it's been a struggle, and you've had to take my phone calls at all times. And I appreciate the hard work and the lieutenants, the captains, the paramedics, the MTS, Fire. Thank you for your hard work, and you've, thank you, and you have really made a difference in regards to the pandemic and how it hit the city assemblies. So very grateful to all the employees for those providing the excellent service, for those people doing that extra job or extra things beyond your call of duty. And I just wanna say thank you. Muchas gracias por todo lo que hacen. We really appreciate that. And I don't think that we don't notice that. And thank you for making a difference. To Mr. De La vara, thank you for thinking, to be proactive. I've always pushed people to be proactive, especially in these times. We need to provide a service to our customers, to our residents. Public safety is very important also, their rights, their law is also very important. So everyone, for our grant writer, great job. Thank you so much for everything you do. And I personally wanna thank staff and administration, and I personally wanna thank council. Because without your support, this would not be happening. So council members, gracias también for everything you do. Okay, so we're gonna, if anyone else wants a comment, please feel free.
Mayor, I just wanna say thank you to everybody as well, and congratulations to those that got the awards. Wish we could be there in person and give everybody the great round of applause that they deserve. So thank you, and be safe out there and continue the great work.
Thank you for this.
Yes, Mayor, I would like to make a comment, please.
Yes.
Congratulations to everyone. We're so proud of you all for serving our, being on this amazing team and serving the community from five years to 20 years. That's total dedication and your professionalism. We're just so proud of you and, and all those little details that you guys do behind the scenes. You know, I'm glad that they brought them forward, example being Squad C. That, that's amazing. That just comes from the heart, and it just shows everyone how special everyone is. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your hard work, and also thank your employees, you know.
Perfect. Thanks. Thank you, Mario. Anyone else?
Mayor, I just wanna add congratulations to all the recipients. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Afrika. Anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanna thank you, everybody, all the recipients, and thank you for the hard work that you've done for the city.
Thank you. Thank you, Gloria. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna go ahead and go with the consent agenda. All matters are considered routine by city council. I mean, I give a one motion, discussion desired, and I will be moved from the consent agenda. It will be considered separately. Minutes of regular council meeting held June 24, 2020, work session held July 1, 2020, regular council meeting held July 8, 2020. This versus from August 1, 2020 through August 14, 2020. Third, square footage is $900,229.57. I will now say the motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. I was in favor.
Aye.
I was against. Motion carries. Item number 6A, Discussion of Possible Action Items. Discussion of Possible Action on all matters regarding contract with James Davie Associates and Company to provide design and engineering services for Mesa Street improvements, Jenny Torres, Economic Development Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Every year, we try to select a project that we could do the design and submit for an Arizona Department of Housing State Special Project, which has a competitive grant funding. This year, we identify as Mesa Street as one of the areas that might qualify and that definitely needs improvement. As part of, if you can show the maps, Sonia. Ulochio and I met, and we talked to the engineer and Jose, and originally, we had a smaller area, and we decided that we needed to include an additional area. The original allocation in the capital project budget was $35,000. Because of that additional road that we're adding, the design went up to almost $38,000. So a little bit more, a little bit more of $3,000, Waste, not Waste Water, but. Public Works, HERF, I believe, is gonna be the, the other account that will pay for that additional amount. And Ulochio is here to discuss the need to include that additional road if you, if you need him to. Other than that, I'd like to request that you award the contract to James Davies and Associates. He's been doing most of our CDVG projects and understands the needs, and CDVG likes him, so we continue to contract with him. So if you have any questions on the actual design, Ulochio is here to discuss the area, but I would encourage you to authorize this request.
I just wanna comment that Jamie Davie, thank you for the great service you do. And Mr. Ulochio, could you explain exactly the design real quick?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and Vice Mayor as well. So the original scope of this project included doing the alley, and we call it Mesa Street, but it's really the Mesa Alley. And we have a portion of C Street, a portion of E Street, and then we have a section of Mesa between Caesar Child Boulevard and E Street. So the, the change in scope, pretty much, we added what the actual Mesa Street alignment between E and C. And really, the, what we're looking at there, or part of the change in scope, was to do additional survey to pick up that area and making sure that if we were to additional survey to pick up that area and making sure that if we were to improve that roadway, we definitely wanted to drain properly and be reviewed and analyzed and designed as part of the other portion of the project. We originally hadn't included in the project because there's really no room to get a roadway in there at this point, but knowing that it's downtown, not, and having quite a bit of vacant land, we never know how that's going to be developed. So, we want to keep our options, you know, in case we do want a road through Mesa Street that could continue south of E, other way to C, and provide an additional two-way roadway with sidewalk on one side. So, that's, that's the reason we added that, that additional portion of road into the scope. Like I said, at this point, it's not, there's not room for the entire length, but it could be, it could be sufficient to get a roadway in there. Not sure if there's any specific questions or anything that I missed that want me to cover?
No, no, Mr. Reda, thank you so much. I just want, I just wanted to just get a quick clarification. Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to council members, so I'm gonna go individually. Africa, I'm gonna ask a question concerns comments.
No, Mayor, just that I, I'm supportive of this project, and thank you for thinking of adding that other street, that other road.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, any questions, comments, concerns?
No, Mayor, I guess Mesa Street is the one that is close to the post office?
Correct.
Okay. I'm glad, I'm glad that you do this, this street, because we had some, a few complaints about it, so I'm glad. Thank you.
Yeah, no, the addition to the Mesa Street is actually very good. Thank you for thinking that, because we definitely have some issues on that street, so, so thank you. Vice Mayor, questions, concerns, comments?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mari, we can, Jenny, any questions, comments, concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Thank you. Mathieu Rosales, any comments, questions, concerns?
When do we start?
There we go. How long is it gonna take? There we go.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, gracias, thank you. Bonse, is Bonse present?
No, he's not, Mayor.
Oh, okay. I just want to make sure. I want to make sure I didn't miss anyone else. Okay, if, if there's all the questions, concerns, and were answered, and comments were given, I will now retain a motion.
Mayor, I approve the contract with James Davie and Associates Inc. in the amount of $38,890 for engineering services, services as presented. Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Allos against?
Aye.
Perfect. Good, thank you. Allos against? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. We're gonna go ahead and go with item number 6B, discussion of possible action on matters regarding authorization to increase the financial budget to fiscal year 2020, 2021, necessary to, to spend remaining funds from the North American Development Bank Technical Assistant Grant awarded and accepted in fiscal year 2019, 2020. Jenny Torres, Government Development Manager.
Mayor, members of the council, if you recall, the North American Development Bank, NatBank, provided us with a technical assistant grant last year. The grant is to develop a feasibility study for natural gas to the east of town. We had a deadline of, of June when the project or the feasibility study was to be completed. Unfortunately, unfortunately, due to COVID-19, we had some delays. NatBank is very specific about making sure that both the US and the Mexico side is part of this project, and we had been unable to collect the information from San Luis Río, Colorado. I think we made some, we made some progress, but we had to extend it till August, and now we had to extend it till October. We believe that this would be the last time we will extend it. NatBank and Berkeley, Berkeley Group both accepted, so we do have another amendment on it. But what this specific item does is, we did not include it in this fiscal year budget because we thought we were going to be completed in June. And so, now, in order to correct and put it in the, in the budget, we need to increase the budget, and we need to allow the grant money to come in and for us to spend it. So, it's more of a technicality in, in correcting the budget. There's no additional funding from the city that will be paid for this project. It's just receiving the remaining funds of the grant and expending it. I don't know if you have any specific questions?
No, Jenny, this is just, no, I just thank you. Thank you for bringing that topic up. I know NatBank is very specific, so, no, we, it's, NatBank is a continuous partner with the city of San Luis and the region, and also with Mexico. So, thank you for clarifying that, and so, let's, let's make this right. Thank you, Jenny. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to council. If they have any questions, comments, or concerns. Africa, I'm gonna ask a question, comments, concerns?
No, thank you, Jenny.
Gloria Torres, question, comments, concerns?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Maria Sisilacruz, Vice Mayor, questions, comments, concerns?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Mari, we can, Jenny, question, comments, concerns?
None, Mayor, thanks.
Thank you. Mathieu Rosales, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. If not, we'll now retain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the increase in budget to $97,544 as presented.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Allos in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Allos against? Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
We're gonna go at item number 6C, discussion of possible action on matters regarding the city assemblies entering into the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact with the State of Arizona, the State Department of Energy, Military Affairs, and all political jurisdictions within the state of Arizona, including the Hocopah Indian Tribe and Fort Yuma, the Chanishin Tribe, which are parties to the compact. Chief or Lieutenant?
Good evening, Mayor, and council members, staff. This mutual aid agreement has several benefits to, to the agency, to the department. One of the main things, obviously, it'll be, it'll be officially be able to be of mutual aid to each other in terms of emergency. And also, the most important thing as well, besides that, will be the accreditation that we're currently working on. This project has been worked on since 2018. It's been about a year and a half since we've been working on this, and that will put us in, show that we are an agency working under best practices. September 1st and 2nd, that's when the assessors will be coming over and will be conducting their, their process. The important thing also, again, we need this accreditation to be able to apply for federal grants specifically such as the Stone Garden, which is a very important grant for the officers that will ultimately allow the city to have more, more officers out there on the field to assist in any matter necessary and needed. Also, on different types of grants, such as if we go back to the, the cops grant, which will focus on, on having more school resource officers added to the different schools. Again, we need this accreditation, which is very, very important and essential for, for the success of us being able to apply for these grants. We are pretty much ahead of the game as an agency. We will be the very first agency in Yuma County Police Agency to, to be able to achieve this. It's, it's been a, it's been a, it's been quite a, quite a project that, that we are just about to achieve. So, again, Stone Garden grant money, all of that is very, very important, and we, we really need this for the success of the agency.
Thank you, Lieutenant. I think this is very important. I congratulate you, your staff, chief, and everyone else who's making this happen, and all I, all I want to say is that the city of San Luis is growing, saw, saw the need for public safety, and it's very important. We have all the cooperation and the communication between the different agencies, especially now that we know that we've, we've gone through, and we're going through a pandemic that actually requires the working relationship with other agencies. It's very important, from federal, state, local, to the Indian tribes, and no, this is something that needs to happen, and thank you for being proactive and actually being ahead of the curve. And so, great job. Congratulate you, your staff, and the chief for, for the great work that you guys have done, and I just want to say that it's, it's a necessity, and thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to council. If there's any comments, questions, or concerns. Africa, I'm gonna ask a question, comments, concerns?
None, Mayor, thank you. Just that I echo your statement right now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gloria Torres, questions, comments, concerns?
No, Mayor, yes, Sergeant Santana, Chief Jesup is in the office, is working?
He is on vacation for the week, should be back on Monday. I am in turn for him today, representing the agency and the chief as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Maria Sisilacruz, Vice Mayor, questions, comments, concerns?
Just a comment. Congratulations, this is just a step closer for your accreditation program. So, yes, most definitely, we need this.
Thank you. Mari, we can, Junior, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mathieu Rosales, questions, comments, concerns?
Oh, sir, none, thank you.
Thank you. If not, I will now retain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve the Arizona Mutual Aid Compact as presented.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Allos against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Item number 6D, discussion of possible action on matters regarding the bidding process of the construction of the 9B restroom for this project. Lisa Nogalavies, Director of National Rights?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilman, and administration. Tonight, I come to you reviewing the bids that we have, have received for this project. Staff is recommending that we reject all bids and that we look at different alternatives for completing this project, either by subbing out and doing some in-house, or looking at other options to put maybe a prefab restroom area or something that would be able to accommodate and be used in that area. Sonia, do you have that picture of the restroom, please? No? Playing with me. That's a good one, Sonia, woke me up. This is one of the prefabricated restrooms that we're looking at as an option for the budget that we, we have been approved for. I think we'll be able to do something like this, working with Public Works and with the Parks Division. This would be something similar to what we'd be able to, to be allocated in that area, so. That is my presentation. And that's another option of the restroom.
I like the other one better.
Which one?
I like the, the first one.
The first one? Okay. The same restroom, just different.
Yeah. That looks more homie, I guess.
But that is, that is our recommendation for the bidding process for tonight.
Louis?
Yes?
Out of curiosity, the bidding, what size square footage is this bathroom supposed to be that they bid it for?
It was similar to the other restrooms. I want to say it was close to 1,000 square feet. We were hoping to be able to put something similar like we have at Joe Cabeo and Pep Park, just that, that size restroom. Now, with the construction costs and what, what we were requesting with the different amenities for the stainless steel and the sinks, that, that cost has risen dramatically. So, this is another option that we could do. This would, you know, we believe would be able to handle the need for that area, and of course, the 20-acre park is maybe half a mile away, so those, you will have, you know, restrooms that will, will accommodate a larger group, but of course, those restrooms right now that we're looking at are between $250,000 and $300,000.
Yeah, and that's why I was asking that, because, I mean, I see the cost of construction versus restaurants, I'm like, you could build a full-blown house with that.
Yes.
House and a half. That's why I was, I'm like, are they trying to build a 2,000-square-foot bathroom with? But I guess, you know, depends on what the scope was, elevation or whatever's costing so much. I was just curious to see what part of the construction was actually costing that much.
It was, it was the block and the plumbing that we saw that was the, that, that the vendors that put the bid in were, were, that was their larger bids that, when I talked to them, so. And, and so, we were really surprised because just looking at past restrooms and the cost, it was something, you know, the amount was more than we definitely, was unexpected.
That's a very, very high number. I mean, really, I mean, I, I mean, I expected the, I agree with you, Mathieu, I expected you, I expect the restroom to be like three times as big for that price.
The restroom that you're looking at, that, that I, Sonia had put on the screen, the two restrooms, those, those are about $40,000, $50,000.
Okay.
And, and they come already kind of, they come in parts. It's block, it's stainless, you know, has some stainless steel features in it, and, and so, that's more into our budget that we have currently for this. And like I said, this would accommodate the need of that area.
Okay, good. I'm gonna go ahead and open the floor to council members. Africa, I'm gonna ask a question, comments, concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, comments, questions, concerns? Gloria?
No, Mayor. I see the prices of the bids, they were very high.
Yeah, exactly. Thank, thank you, Gloria. Vice Mayor, comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, Mayor, I, I agree that the prices are high, and I'm just glad that they'll be able to, to do it themselves or subcontract also, in-house and subcontract, so we'll see what those numbers come out to.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mari, we can, Junior, questions, comments, concerns?
None, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Mathieu Rosales, comments, questions, or concerns?
I already said, I'm here, so, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. If there's more comments, questions, concerns, I will now retain a motion.
Mayor, reject. Bids received for the 9B restroom facilities project due to the base being over budget and direction staff to explore positive effective options.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Allos in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Allos against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 6D, discussion of possible action on matters regarding all those 840 million payout.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, this is basically the same item you approved on June 24 of 2020. However, from those 63 employees, we missed 10 of them. So, unless you have any questions about it, we recommend you. So, unless you have any questions about it, we recommend you approve all of this item before you.
I have a quick question for you on this one. So, is it moving? Okay, we moved to approve this for the 2020-21 fiscal year?
Yes, that is correct. Since the other ones, the last 63 employees were paid out, out of last fiscal year, we brought over for your approval the ones that were missed because we are in a different fiscal year.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that the employees get paid and we don't miss anyone. That's very important. And the total number is 9,600?
That is correct.
Okay. This is not 40 or 60,000. Okay, good. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor to questions or concerns. African Nakarasco, comments, questions, concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, questions, comments, concerns?
No, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, questions, comments, concerns?
None.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., questions, concerns?
Yes, are we done? Would this be the last?
Yes.
This will be the last.
Okay, just making sure.
Perfect, Mayor. Thank you for that question. Matías Rosales, comments, questions, concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. If not, I will now take the motion.
Mayor, I move to approve up to 9,600 for 2021 fiscal year. Other than that, the timing of the payouts, the payout shall be under the same conditions of the city's council June 24, 2020 motion.
Is there a second?
Second, I have.
There is a motion, there is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to go ahead and, let's see here, item number 67, discussion of bus action on matters regarding Resolution Number 2138, the resolution of the mayor, city council, City of San Luis, Sonora temporary suspending imposition of late penalty charge or water utility accounts temporarily suspending shutouts of water services for non-payment and temporary suspending imposition of shutout fees due to declared COVID-19 virus emergency. Repealing any conflicting provisions and provide resolvability and declaring an emergency. Mr. Perez?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, and staff present here. Jorge Perez, Benin Collections Manager. So, I'm here presenting before you, as you stated, Mayor, Resolution Number 2138. As previously discussed on a previous work session, this resolution, it's regarding the imposition and suspension of water, wastewater and trash penalties on utility accounts. So, basically, Resolution Number 2138 extends the suspension on the imposition of these fees for a couple more months due to the coronavirus pandemic. And it's stating to last until the declaration of emergency shall terminate or November 1 of this year 2020. With this resolution, we're also proposing to start the 10% late penalty charge on utility accounts, which is just a penalty on the water bill for customers that do not pay the bill on time, which is the due date on most of the cases on the 28th of each month. And that's to start with the billing of November. This resolution also proposes a ceiling fee, I'm sorry, not a fee, a ceiling balance on delinquent accounts of $200 to start creating payment plans for those customers that owe more than $200 and put them on that payment plan to be retired until June 30, 2021. So, that's basically the recommendation on the resolution. I'm here in case you have any questions regarding this topic.
Yeah, George, I have a quick question. And this will go to, what is it, what's the deadline on this one? Till November or till January?
So, from this date until November 1, we're going to continue as we are right now. We're not going to impose any late fee or any charge on delinquent accounts, and we're not going to disconnect any water service. So, starting November 1, we're going to ask customers that owe more than $200 to bring that balance below that amount, and we're going to be able to put them on a payment plan to avoid the disconnection and additional charges. Obviously, we're going to be reaching out to customers, but we also need for customers to get in touch with us and work on that payment plan because if we don't hear from them, it's really hard to assist them.
Thank you, George. I think it's something that is necessary and need to be clarified. For the record, George, we have not increased water rates.
We haven't.
Correctly?
Nope.
Okay. For the record, I just want to clarify because I've been reading some comments in social media that we have increased water rates. And as of right now, I don't remember increasing or approving any water rates at this point in time, for the record. Thank you. I will now open the floor for any questions, comments, or concerns. African Nakarasco, comments, questions, concerns?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Gloria Torres, comments, questions, or concerns?
No, Mayor, no questions.
Thank you, Gloria. Vice Mayor, comments, questions, or concerns?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Mario Buchanan Jr., comments, questions, or concerns?
Yes, Mayor. Jorge, how many delinquent accounts do we have?
As of yesterday, we run a report for this month, and we had 407.
And they're way above $200 right now?
Some of them. Give me just a second here. So, above $200, we have 105 accounts, 105. And the rest of those accounts are below the 200 mark.
So, they've been delinquent since they start, I mean, we started with the COVID problem, or they've been behind and repeated customers?
For those 105, most of them haven't made any payments since March. Some of them had made a partial payment of some different amounts, but they do have, those 105 do have multiple months behind.
Okay, but for right now, I guess we're going to let it go by and, starting November 4, you mentioned, we're going to bring this back or?
November 1, yes.
First. Okay, so then we start working with those big accounts that are behind it?
Yes, sir. We actually have started sending out the door hangers, blue notices, we call them. And we also been making phone calls to those customers to try to see if we can collect some payments and also see if we can be of any assistance in directing them to private and nonprofit organizations that may be able to help them with the utility bill.
Okay, as long as we're working with them and reminding them that they have an account overdue, that's good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mario. Matías Rosales, comments, questions, concerns?
No, sir.
Thank you. If not, no more comments, comments, questions, concerns, I will now take the motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt an approved Resolution Number 2138 as presented.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? And for clarification, this was declared an emergency for point of reference. Okay, and they passed unanimously. All those against? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. We're now going to go with some of your current events, events by mayor, city council members, and our city manager present to A R S 38-431.02. I just want to say that our numbers have remained stable in regards to COVID. The declining number of positives have been declining, and I am very grateful for the City of San Luis, for staff, for administration, for council. We've been very fortunate. Our numbers, I believe, didn't reach over 1,000. So, that's a big accomplishment. Just want to say, let's continue the work. It's very important. We continue using our masks. The masks have been a great factor in the reduction. As the CDC mentioned, if 80-something percent of the population of the United States, the COVID infection would drop in the 90s percentage percentile. So, they were right. So, I'd like to commend. I personally can tell you that yesterday was the first day, well, yesterday was the first day I didn't see a positive patient in our clinic. So, that's what's always, we're very grateful. So, it's been a long three months, and so hopefully, we can keep it that way. So, I'd like to commend everyone and thank you. Please continue wearing your mask. Please continue easy on the socializing, if at all possible, and keep your family safe. It's very important. That's my comment. Oh, one more thing. Can I get a report on the census, please?
Jose? Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I just want to take a moment to thank all the city departments and city council because everyone has showed their support in this effort to get everyone counting in San Luis. So, we're 36 days away from the final deadline to submit the census, and we're at 39.4%. Also, I want to invite council and staff. We're having an event on Friday at the cultural center. It will be a drive-up event where people will drive up on their vehicle, and we will be there helping them fill out their census. They will not be, they will not have to get out of their vehicle. Also, we're taking appointments where we can help residents fill out their census outside of the parking lot of the city hall, or if they don't have transportation, staff is going to their houses and helping them fill that out. Or they can also stop the promotional truck that is going around the city promoting the census. And we're also participating with the schools during their lunch distribution. We're giving away flyers with census information.
So, we're at 39%. For the record, the city has done, we've done the campaign, we spent over $60,000. We have employees going out, we have, I mean, the participation from the state, federal government, and we still have 39% participation in our census. I just, for the record, I want to make sure that people understand, for those people who have not submitted their census, you are putting millions of dollars that can come to the City of San Luis via grants, via, through the Department of Education. We, all those things are jeopardized by not participating in the census. And so, the City of San Luis has done its best to promote the census in the situation we're in. I know it is a pandemic, I know it's, but it's something that takes 15, 10 minutes to do. You can do it by phone, you can do it by telephone, you can do it in person on Friday. So, there's absolutely no reason, no excuse for you not to do the census. So, next year, when your son or daughter goes for a lunch, and there is no lunch for him, it's not up to the city. It is up to the individual to fill out those forms because our population is going to be only 39% of the actual number. For those who participated, I congratulate you and thank you for caring for our city because if you don't do this, it's, you're just, it seems that the city has no meaning. I take it personally, and I know employees have gone and done the work, and there's only so much we can do. And so, I commend those people who have done their census, completed the census for those employees. And I expect every employee who lives in the City of San Luis, you have better filled out that form. Okay, so, there's actually no excuse for no employee to fill out a census. That we can do. So, we want to make sure that all employees of the City of San Luis fill out those forms. There's no reason. That's my take of the census, and so we only have so many days. Tadeo?
I just wanted to make a comment. And maybe Francis is about to say, we have the challenge that the mayors did from Yuma, Welton, Somerton, Yuma County, and yourself, challenging employees to fill out their census. Welton won the challenge. The city manager actually was calling employees to make them do the, and fill out their census the same. And I also want to congratulate Jose for filing the grant report to the N O C, and we got those additional $25,000 that will help, hopefully will help us, get us from at least to the 53.8% that we had back in 2010, as we only have 39.4%. Let's remind that from the Arizona Care Act, we got 3.5 million based on that count from 2010. Imagine how much money we would have gotten if at least 70 to 8% would have filled their census back in 2010. And I know that I sound like a broken record, but it's very important that we do this. Francis, are you going to say something different?
Yeah, so we had already had, my community of the businesses, we had so far nine confirmed that they were going to be participating in the challenge, and I'm making sure their employees were counting and helping push the census to their customers. In addition, we also have reached out to our state representatives and Senator Lisa Tondo. We have videos coming from them as well that we're going to be able to push out through all social media that encourages our residents to participate in the census and join us for this Friday's census drive-up event. And Senator Tondo's video will be up tomorrow morning.
Okay. What time is the event on Friday?
The event Friday is from 8:00 a.m. to noon, and then again from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Very good. Thank you. Again, all of you so much, guys, so thank you. I appreciate for the hard work. Anyone else? Comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, if not, I will now take a motion to adjourn.
One more, Mayor.
There's a motion on the floor. There's a second. Just to let you know, before we vote, Arizona as a whole is at 62% census participation. That's not a lot also. So, the state of Arizona has 62% participation in the census. So, our numbers are going to be way off anywhere you put it. Would have been nice if San Luis was at least at 60%. So, no, thank you. There was a motion, there was a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those against? Motion carries. Thank you. Have a good night, guys. Thank you so much.
Aye.